Well, let's call this meeting to order. Uh, I like, Jeff? Ready? Okay. Uh, wait a minute. I got an, I got an estimate. We had a executive meeting before this meeting. And there's one presentation, so we're gonna get on, get along with that. It's a emergency operation plan.
So, um, we have Greg.
Greg?
Greg from Blaze Mark, who is here to present on emergency operations plan. Our fire marshal, fire marshal, Robert Zinni will introduce. And this is for the entire entirety of the town of Conshohocken. So, Mr. Zinni, if you can come to the podium, please. Thank you.
Okay, so basically, um, what we have is we're using a template. It is countywide. It's basically a booklet that we use and we fill the blanks in as we go along on an emergency. Not saying that we don't have a plan. We do have a plan, but it's very generic. So, for the past three years, I've been working on trying to get their template to work for us precisely for this town. And it is very time-consuming. We don't have the tools to do it, and we don't have the time to do it. So, we've been working with Blaze Mark for the past three years. And we finally had the, uh, the monies budgeted and allocated for this. So, uh, we're gonna have a more comprehensive plan for the town that includes everything from fire, EMS, police, public works, uh, and the sewer authority, should something else happen. We're right next to the river. We have a major gas line that runs through here on Kawa Lane. We have major gas company over in West Conshohocken. And we have a major freight rail that runs in West Conshie. Actually, it runs from Barks County all the way into New Jersey. Uh, how this all started, really getting more comprehensive was, was the Bakken oil. I call it the Bakken oil crisis. And what were we to do? Well, the whole county hired Blaze Mark Fire Planning Associates to work from Barks County, if I'm correct, all the way to the Jersey line. So, that's a lot of rail. And I seen that as an opportunity to ask them to come in and maybe build something for us, for this town. And who knows where it's gonna go from there? So, without stealing any more of Greg's thunder, uh, Jake, or Greg Jacobowski from Fire Planning Associates.
One quick question.
Yes.
Does West Conshohocken have an emergency operation plan? Do they have this now?
Uh, I believe everyone is using the template.
Okay.
In the county. So, I think we're gonna be one step above everyone.
Okay.
All right? We're already tied into it. The other thing that that does is the county, the county ties into this. So, we're already affiliated with Blaze Mark. So, I think there's 12 of us on there. And it's basically a user ID, password, get in there. And they can also see exactly what's going on in Conshie and what we have our plan, which is great. Um, and that, that all came about with the Bakken oil, with the rail line, with these guys created. So, okay.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
So, good evening. My name is Greg Jacobowski. It's a little tough to say. People got a lot better because a couple of weeks ago, there was some crazy guy threatening the president with the same name, from Wisconsin. I promise you, there's 461 Jacobaskis, according to the internet in Wisconsin, none of which are related to me in any way, shape, or form that I know of. So, anyway, um, I'm, I'm a local person. I grew up in Montgomery County, in the eastern part of Montgomery County. I'm a fire protection engineer, been a firefighter for, since 1978. Taught incident command, was one of the two people who the county here had teaching for about 20 years, incident command, incident management. Uh, I was the deputy chief at Burnathen Fire and Ambulance and wrote Burnathen Borough's Emergency Plan way back a long, long time ago. I know it's a small community. I also wrote Wrightstown Township in Bucks County's Emergency Plan recently. That's up where I live. And I served for six years. You'll find this interesting. You've probably never heard of it, but the chief of the Lingahocken Fire Company, Lingahocken, also a Lenny Lenape name, much like Conshohocken. I think Conshohocken is Pleasant Valley, something close to that. Lingahocken is Pleasant Land. So, uh, we cover about 20 square miles up in beautiful central Bucks County. But, uh, in the meantime, I've worked, uh, I got hired by Merck and worked for a small little company called Merck up at West Point after they had a $30 million fire in 1986. And I was hired to not let that happen again and write their emergency management programs. Um, and I built that site from 4,000, 8,000 people and then wound up in Bucks County because I got put on the world tour for them. And I've worked in 19 countries on five continents. So, um, I've worked in emergency response and, and fire protection around the world, literally. That's a little bit about me, some, you know, personal kind of things. So, I've been involved in probably about 11,000 emergency incidents since I started my career. We do several different things with emergency planning, one of which is pre-emergency planning with our Blaze Mark software, um, where we take buildings, we take facilities, places under construction, high-rise buildings and so on, and put a great deal of detail about those buildings in our software program, which is what Bob is referring to, um, so that when these guys respond to an emergency, they know which connection they have to connect to, they know where to go on which floor, uh, how to turn the electric off, how to make sure the fire pump's running in the building, all the things that are critical to know. And most interestingly enough is that the fire code requires all new buildings under construction to have a pre-plan that is approved by the fire chief. So, that's sort of a separate piece of what we're doing. What our proposal tonight for you is to take the template that Bob is talking about and turn it into a much more customized emergency management plan for the borough, recognizing all the buildings in the borough, um, all the hazards in the borough. We've done extensive planning, as Bob has said, of the whole rail line that runs all the way down through West Conshohocken Borough, but literally right on the, you know, right on, on your border here. We've pre-planned the blue route and the, um, turnpike. We've pre-planned the blue route and the Schuylkill interchange, all where all the drains go, all that sort of thing is in our software. So, we know the area very well. Ironically, on 9/11/01, uh, I was sitting in an office at Jacobs Engineering on Ash Street here in Conshohocken Borough when I received a call, you know, hey, a plane hit the towers. And, you know, ah, it's a little plane, whatever. Like many of us, turned the news on. When I saw the second plane, I then told my boss, I'm leaving this project. We were designing a $250 million plant in Singapore, and I was the fire safety environmental lead on that project. They said, I'm leaving to report to the fire station, who knows what's next. This, all the same thing happened with your responders here. And if I can't remember, it was the next day or the following day when the bomb threats started here in Conshohocken and wound up evacuating along with thousands of other people to the Washington Fire Company, um, ballroom. So, I know Conshohocken, um, from, from a lot of different ways. We've already worked closely with your emergency management people. We work closely with the county. We're local folks, but we also have a breadth of experience across the world with small to very large incidents. And we'd like to ask your approval if we're able to work with your folks to help you to build your plan, to make it customized. It would go into the online software so that all of your folks that have access to it can immediately pull it up on any web-enabled device. It can also be printed out as well. But the beauty, as many of you know, and I think you have the, the plan right now, or the proposal on your iPads, is that when you get that, it's the most current ver, version of the plan. It's immediately available and accessible to folks when needed versus lots of hard copies that have to be updated. And, you know, it's always the one, we, we go into a lot of large manufacturing companies, one not too far from here, and guy said, yeah, I have a plan sitting here. It's from 1990. I don't know where the latest plan is for the emergency for the site. So, that's a little bit about me. That's a little bit about our company. Besides myself, I have several, uh, associates that'll be working on it. One in particular works for a very large township, uh, in Bucks County. He's got a master's degree from public, uh, in public safety from St. Joe's University, does a lot of work for us, very good in writing plans and that sort of thing, uh, as well as another junior member who's a recent graduate of Virginia Commonwealth University in their emergency management program. So, we will be using people that are experts in that, and all of them are active emergency responders in our community. So, they do this thing day after day after day. So, that's me. That's my company. I didn't go into the proposal in detail because I think you have it there.
Yeah.
But I would be happy to take any questions you might have in any way that, anything I can answer for you.
Yeah, I do have one.
Yes, ma'am.
How often do you see this type of a plan being revised?
Um, it should be looked at annually, right? It should be taken a look at on an annual basis. Revisions, um, you know, what you're using right now is a plan that is, as Bob said, it's kind of a template that came from the county. There were some things that came from White Marsh, um, that definitely are, are White Marsh kind of oriented things that need to be really made Conshohocken-oriented. Um, you know, major revisions, you're, you know, the, the borough sort of stands the way it's, the borough stood for hundreds of years with the exception of new buildings and, and that, the hazards change a little bit with the oil trains, but the flooding has been here for ever and ever, I'm sure. Um, I, I've seen some of that here as well. Um, you know, major revisions probably on a five-year basis are a good thing, but, uh, the day-to-day revisions are, um, once and done. And what we find with a lot of plans that we work with is, once we create, once we do the, most of the legwork, your folks, you know, it's a time-constrained issue, right? And they can up, you know, make the small changes if they stay ahead of it. It's that getting the whole thing, getting over the hump and doing that. And what we're committing to do is to try and get that done for you in a two-month period from the time you tell us to, to go. So, you know, we'll, we'll put the emphasis on it and get it done as opposed to something, well, we can try and get it done, and sometimes those things, like, like I should clean my office at home, right? And I think I said that, well, we'll leave it alone.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Is part of the contract, um, education and drilling the plan?
Um, not drilling, not doing an actual exercise, but as far as education, making sure that the folks here, you know, we would hold a, a training session to review the plan.
And who would be involved in that?
That's completely up to you, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah, whoever. We'd, we'd love to have everybody who could have a role in it. We realize that's a struggle. Again, many of my corporate clients, I do things for the top management people, and it's tough to get all the bosses in the same place at the same time.
So, along that lines, who's involved in creating the specifics of the plan? Is it just the employees? Is it residents? Is it business owners? I mean, if we're looking at a comprehensive emergency management plan, I would think that they're all key stakeholders?
Mm-hmm.
And, um, do they have participation in any of this process?
Um, they, they can. That's, that's kind of up to you more than us, right? We can't necessarily reach out, except through you, to people in the community. Much of this in the plan comes from your staff people. Your, your folks know, they've been here, Bob's been here, I, I must hate to even ask, but I know Bob's been here a long time, and others in the police department and so on. They, they know the ins and outs of the community. We understand the business world very well. And it's, it's a challenge at times to do a plan that reckon, that references all the businesses in the community because we do it now and next year that they've moved somewhere else. But, you know, where we can tie into the community, we, we will, but it would only be through your staff.
Okay. Um, and then this plan will cover large-scale, small-scale, nuclear, chemical, all disasters?
Um, it, it will be an all hazards plan, designed for any type of scenario, right? When you say nuclear, I gotta be a little careful because, you know, a nuclear plant incident is one thing versus a nuclear attack is a very difficult situation to, to deal with. But the intent is, is that the plan would be more focused on larger things that require multiple different services, that require fire, police, EMS and all together, and how that's all coordinated. We're not gonna tell the fire department how to fight fires. That's what they're good at. We're not gonna tell the police department how to, you know, handle bank robbers and that sort of thing. That's what they're good at. But we will look at things that there's, there's overlap and address that kind of thing in the plan. And follow the state and county template as well to make sure that you're in compliance with the regulations.
And then lastly, um, I see orange signs, blue signs. Is, is that all part of the county plan for emergency management, like evacuation and different things? I'm just curious how all that ties in.
Yeah, I, I think, are you referring to detour signs?
Green, the green route. Green route, blue route.
The green routes, the blue routes, the red routes. I'm just trying to understand.
The routes, I, I think, and, you know, we haven't looked into it, but I think the routes we're talking about is if someone gets detoured off of the, the blue route, where, where they're supposed to follow. That's a Penn dot thing, unless we're talking about something else?
No, this is, this is all over the county, and I'm trying to tie into what those evacuation routes really mean.
Pretty sure it's a DOT thing.
Okay.
Almost positive.
Not emergency management?
No.
Okay.
I actually hit it, I actually hit an accident on Route 10, and we followed those signs, and they took us right around this little town and right back on Route 10.
Yes, so, some of those are good. My experience with those is that some are maintained well and others are maintained very poorly.
Okay.
You know, that, that the signs got put up once and then they got forgotten about, and an accident takes one out and it messes the whole thing up. Nobody's chasing after it.
I have two questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Where locally have you done your plan? Where has it been implemented?
Um, well, the local planning, we've, I've, I've done work in Burnathen Borough. I was the emergency management guy in the borough and for Merck where we had 8,000 employees there. Uh, we work with, in pre-emergency plan, a little different from this emergency plan, but we extensively do work for Montgomery County, the rail line, the Norris Town Transportation Center, the courthouse, um, some other hazardous material sites that aren't right near here but are, are key target hazards. We do pre-planning for all that infrastructure.
Thank you. Do you see this coming as one piece and then other municipalities will follow suit? Or can we stand alone in this?
Um, I, I really don't know that, ma'am. I, I mean, I, s- some, some folks are happy with the plan that they have and others are, uh, are not. We're, I, I don't know the answer to that question. I'm sorry.
That's fine. And then finally, with the training that's gonna be available, would our own personnel be able to add a new building? We have quite a few projects in the planning stage? So, if a new building comes on?
Yeah, again, that's, that's a, that's sort of separate from this, right? But the, 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 the pre-emergency planning, site by site, building by building, um, you have that capability today to add that, um, add buildings specific into those pre-plans where all the floor plans and all are in.
Right.
And I want to just sort of make it clear that that's a separate issue than this emergency plan, which is your overall plan for the town.
Right.
Um, or, again, we, that, with building by building, we encourage that as buildings of the magnitude in this town are being built, that you look at requiring them to do the emergency plan, which is already in the international fire code.
Right.
We can support that. Your people can support that, whatever happens to be.
Just to keep it updated as buildings are completed.
Yeah, we do, right. And, and that's really the best way to do it. As buildings are being built and you're getting new hazards in the town.
Right.
That, the folks bringing those risks to town should be responsible for providing the plans for those risk, and, and it's required now. But we do that for, uh, one of the towns, we do an extensive amount of that work for Hopewell Township, New Jersey. If you're familiar, if you cross 95 in New Jersey, there's a brand-new hospital there, Capital Health Systems. We pre-planned that actually every two weeks while it was being built. It was one of the largest things there.
Great.
So...
Thank you.
Yep.
Tina? Remember that question you asked about the signs?
Yes.
Um, well, you know, I worked for the government and we had a lot of the SWAT teams practice on our facility in case of a nuclear attack, in case of any hostages and things like that. But, okay, we go under yellow alert and things like that. That's a different type of sign. I mean, that's not something that they post down in public. Okay? Like, I would get notice on my computer, like, I have things here, okay, like, from when, uh, about, then loaded back to my security. Okay? What was going on ahead of time, so we were, you know, when to order. That's what they do. They have different codes, and each code means something. And normally, police departments, government officials, anybody like that will be told about it, and they're involved, and they know what that situation is at the time. So, I'm very familiar, but like I said, I've worked in the field over 20 years, so, and I've had, I'm certified in everything. You may, I got certification in that, so...
Thank you.
And I'd be more than willing to work with this gentleman and help out if he would want some help. I mean, I'm more than happy to do it.
Thanks.
Any more questions?
Um, I just have a question for Bob. So, um, this, the approach is basically saying, um, that it will put us in compliance with the NFPA 1600 and Pennsylvania Title 35. Is that a requirement of the municipal code to be in compliance with those? And are we currently out of compliance?
We're in compliance.
Okay.
What we're doing is, we're using the template that the county uses. We're taking that template, and we're gonna make it a more comprehensive plan for Conshohocken, not no one else, just Conshohocken. So, I think White Marsh is, they're, they wanna know how it's gonna work out for us. They're probably gonna follow suit because we're, we're their template and our template. In fact, we, we took their template, and it's an Excel sheet. And it's, it's pretty firefighter-friendly. You, you know, you tap on a picture if you want the police, and it has all the police stuff and their firing and what have you. But it's, it's like, you know, Greg was talking, our books are about that thick. It's hard copy. When we gotta change stuff, I mean, it was a nightmare, just to change all you guys on there. It was a nightmare. This here is a one-time deal. Alls we have to do is, is we can either, uh, you know, remaintain it, we can delete stuff out with council changes, we can delete the old council out with a new council, that's simple. None of this stuff, trying to make copy, scan stuff, and it just looks very sloppy and it's time-consuming.
So, is part of this contract access to this database as well? And are there ongoing costs to the de, to that access or anything?
Uh, right now, I think we're, the price actually went down. I think we're at $1,500, uh, a year, and that's just for the, the rail line and whatever we put in there as far as pre-plans. So, we can put our buildings, um, that we have here, we can pre-plan them, and then we can give them to Blaze Mark, they'll put them in the database, and then we're, we're good to go. So, this is going to marry to that.
So, is Blaze Mark hosted then by their company? It's not hosted locally in our building?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. It's at a data center, VOS data center in Bethlehem, and if...
They're not responsible for updating costs to, you know, update hardware or any of that, that?
Correct. Correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Any more questions?
Maybe the other thing is, just to answer one of those questions, uh, we have to be careful with, with that stuff, like, letting the, the public in on some of that stuff because it's, it's confidential, and we've gotta be really careful.
So, so I would...
I mean, this is going to be police, fire, EMS, public works, and this is where the...
I just would beg to differ that, um, public safety is not confidential. There are pieces that are confidential.
I, I understand.
But I would beg to differ that, um, the idea of an emergency operations plan should not be confidential.
And, and part of that, and we'll discuss that as, as this goes on, but there is a, uh, another software that the county uses, and it's free, and it's called EverBridge. And it's basically reverse 911. So, what we're gonna try to do is we're gonna try and pinpoint, like, the apartment buildings down along the river. We can pinpoint that, but those folks gotta join. You know, they had to sign up for it. As long as they sign up for it, we can send that information right up to the ERC in Montgomery County, and they'll put whatever message we wanna give them, say, if they have a holdup somewhere or whatever. So, let's hold up in our building. The police can go right in there, boom, 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 they can reverse 911 now to their cellphones, their iPads or whatever. So, that's gonna be part of it. Good. And that is basically free. That is no cost to us. But we wanna make sure that in our plan, we can do that. So, if, if, if I'm running the scene, or fire chief, or, you know, the director of public works is running the scene or what have you, the chief of police, they, they'll have everything at their fingertips. And it's, it's just a guide, basically.
Just, just to better answer your question, like, uh, I agree certainly that things need to be public. One of the things that's probably not to be public is lists of personal cellphone numbers, right? All the contact numbers. And we would put that as an appendix to the plan that can then be, you know, sort of not available. The main part of the plan, what people are supposed to do, certainly everybody should know about that. We agree 100%.
Right. And Bob, this money is in your budget, correct?
Correct.
Correct. Yes.
Everybody heard that, right?
Yes. So, there's $10,000 budgeted currently, and the cost is coming in at $9,200.
Any more questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Okay.
Next, next up, we are, um, moving into council business, and we would like to bring Ms. Boyle up for an interview on the Planning Commission.
Yeah? How are you this evening? Good, how are you? Good. So, Devin, you have applied to be part of the Planning Commission. Tell us a little bit about who you are and how you came about to have interest in this position.
Um, I am Lynn Boyle. I actually grew up in Pittsburgh, once in state, came here in 2004 and have been in the Conshohocken, Philadelphia area. Were on and off 13 years, just a quick hiatus in Australia for a while. Been a homeowner since 2013. Um, I work in special logistics for Lily Pulitzer, which is a fast-growing women's apparel company. And I do there, I'm senior manager of the retail and wholesale distribution divisions as well as the overall company's supply chain project manager. Those are like the two big kind of things of what I do. Um, and how I found out about this was kind of from Tina. I was pretty interested in the, um, comprehensive plan committee. It was already capped, so we toppled over.
Have you had the opportunity to, um, look at what the Planning Commission does or kind of have any?
Yes, a little bit. I sat with Rich before he left, um, and he kind of walked me through the basics of it. I do eventually, I know it's probably a lot, but I do wanna push through the ordinances. But he did kind of set me through and say that it's basically ultimately, um, making sure that any sort of new projects or, um, continued projects are adhering with ordinances. So, I think it's kind of, it's pretty good from work because I'm running two big lengths of the business, and I certainly know how to service levels and how to do that by following protocol and process.
Good. Got any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Bob? Got any questions?
Do you have any questions?
You have a question for us?
Um, no. I think I have the answer to the main one. The Planning Commission does it twice a month, or is it just once?
It's just, it's usually once a month.
And how long is the commitment? Four years. So, there's a, like, a...
It's a four-year term. Yeah.
We would have to, if you're being appointed to fill a vacancy, we'd have to double-check exactly what the remainder of the term is.
The remainder of the term, you're filling in vacancies.
Borough manager would let you know when you get your letter.
Yes, filling in the remainder and then, then you're going after that. If you're willing. Is your trial on?
Yeah.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Devin.
At this time, we, we received notification from Mr. Bertram on April 20th stating his resignation from the Planning Commission. So, I would need a motion to accept his resignation from the Planning Commission.
I'll make that motion.
I have a second.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
In the same token, considering the, that we have a well-qualified candidate with us this evening, if you would be so inclined to make a motion to accept the appointment of Ms. Boyle to the Planning Commission, we'd like to do that as well, if that's your favor.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
I got a motion and a second?
So, we're clear that, for purposes of calculation of the term, it would be to replace or to fulfill the balance of Mr. Bertram's term.
Okay, I got a motion and a second?
I think we have another term vacancy for Mr. Weems.
We do, we have still, we would still have one additional vacancy on the Planning Commission at this time.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
All opposed?
I made the motion, aye.
Motion carried.
Congratulations, Devin. Welcome aboard.
Next item on the agenda is manager matters. We have two individuals here from Fulton Bank. John and Van, if you'd like to come up to the, you can sit for right now. I'm going to just walk through some general information. But we are looking to consider transferring our current monies that are sitting in BBNT Bank and moving our cash management services to Fulton Bank. In doing that, we would also be looking to renegotiate the terms of our general obligation notes that we have for Borough Hall. Specifically, and you can jump in, we, our current balance with our Fulton loans is $6,505,300 with a fixed rate of 2.86%. And in moving our cash management business to Fulton, they would be willing to consider dropping our rate to 2.39%, which would save you roughly $30,000 a year in interest expense over the next five years. And in addition, Fulton is also, in terms of the service fees and the interest rates that we would be getting with our cash sitting in Fulton, we would also be netting an additional average of $30,000 annually as opposed to our current, we are in a deficit of $10,000 with BBNT right now. So, John or Van, I'm not sure if you have anything to add or if council has any questions, they can dress, direct it directly to you.
Yeah, first off, thank you for having us tonight. Stephanie did a great job of summing up the offering that we structured for you. In a sense, you begin to yield interest on your average daily balances in the majority of the checking accounts that will be moved over. That's roughly $33,000 annually as opposed to that $10,000 deficit. And, you know, we're thrilled to enhance our relationship with you and build upon the loan that we provided for the Borough Hall. And Stephanie suggested we be willing to reduce your rate. And over that five-year term, the aggregate sum is $141,000 in interest expense savings. So, a gain of interest income of $33,000 and savings of interest expense of $141,000. And that's over the five-year fixed rate term.
I have a question. I know everyone keeps repeating the five-year, assuming that we're not paid in five years.
I'm sorry.
Are you at-
Turn to Michael.
Are you-
You're saying a five-year term. I'm assuming at the end of that five-year term, our $6 million in debt is not paid.
Correct, no, no.
What is at the end of the term?
Sure, your note was structured with a five-year fixed rate of interest.
Okay.
After that, and you're in that, you're in that period right now. What we're proposing is that we break that contract that's executed in the documents, offer you a new five-year fixed rate term of 2.39. At the end of that five-year fixed rate term, you have the option to lock in and do fixed rate.
Okay.
At the market rate at that time.
Okay.
We're happy to do that well in advance of the five-year maturity. Or you can automatically convert to a floating rate index, which is based upon 30-day LIBOR plus a spread that's contained in our loan documents.
Okay, but no balloon?
No balloon.
No, it's, it's always been a rate change. And I think council had contemplated doing it that way because these are no prepayment satisfaction loans and we may elect to refinance the entire package at some point in the future, so.
And we could pay that off at any time.
Correct.
And when you say consider, you are going to do it if we decide to go, you guys, right?
We'd love to do it.
There'd be two conditions, Bob. Council will have to approve the change at your next meeting and the rates would not, none of this would take effect until we actually move the deposits to Fulton Bank.
I mean, how can we go wrong with these numbers?
So, is there a penalty to, coming out of BBT? Okay. And what is the going fixed rate? I mean, is 2.39 a discounted rate or is that the going rate for-
Your current rate is 2.86.
Right.
I just had another municipality's gone out for, for rate quotes in an RFP for a borrowing, a little smaller than this, but it's another borough. Those varied from 2.1 on the low end when, and that was only fixed for the first five years. It averaged out with the floating rate to about 2.4, all the way up to 2.6. So, I think we're right about in the market range right now.
Okay. And forgive me because I'm learning here. Does it have to do with bond rating or anything? Like, how do you decide?
These are general obligation notes, they're not bonds. So, they're, they're not public offerings. The bank has the discretion to set the rate based on our relationship and our, our overall credit rating.
So, if I ask for 2.29, would that be a consideration?
We formally approved 2.39 and as Michael suggested, that is a market, industry market rate at the time for a bank qualified tax-exempt note. And that is the rate that we're offering at this time.
Not 2.29?
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe that we can go.
I have to ask the question.
No harm in asking.
So, if there are no other questions, then it will be on your agenda for the 17th for approval.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both for your time.
Thank you.
Can you wait till the public, public comment at the end, Teresa? Okay, thank you. You're good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Up next, Mr. Massio, if you could please come to the podium. Mr. Massio is here in case you have any questions regarding the fee waiver requests, which we will move into regarding in terms of recreation. You have fee waiver request for Conshohocken Electric Force. There are two options that they're requesting, one for Aubrey Collins Park for basketball on Wednesday evenings and one for use of the community center for a fundraiser. And then you have a fee waiver request for the Conshohocken Golden Bears. They are requesting two uses of the B field for fundraisers, wiffle ball and a cow chip. Yes.
That's correct.
And Mr. Massio, can you please confirm that part of the, the discussion was that they would be responsible for cleanup?
Absolutely. I spoke to the president today and they will, I don't know if anyone's familiar with what cow chipping is? No?
No, I just like to do it.
Yes. They'll come in, they'll, they'll paint a, sort of like a huge bingo on the bingo board on the B field and then people take, they sell chances to where the cow chips will land. And then at the end of, once all said and done, they'll clean everything, all the cow chipping will be taken up and taken away and-
Good fertilizer.
I can have them drop it off at your house.
I got enough of that.
And then the last fee waiver request that we received is for Relay for Life. That is on May 20th at Suckliff Park. That event has been happening for multiple years now and that we don't have any concerns in terms of, based off of anything that's happened prior.
It's May 5th?
May 20th.
Oh, it's May 20th, right.
Charles, I have a question about the Conshohocken Electric Force. Some people are not familiar with that. Could you give the general public-
Conshohocken Electric Force is run by Gloria Scott and Kim Williams. Gloria is an employee up at the community center and it's a, just track program that they run. You have children from Conshohocken, Plymouth, Norristown, some from over around the Villanova Way. And what they, their fundraising, they try and keep their costs as low as possible. And so, I think it's $50 for a child to register for track, which is pretty good. Then they do some fundraising to offset the cost for uniforms.
Thank you.
Some of these events are of a timely nature in that they are happening either this weekend or within this month before the 17th. So, if we could make a motion to approve, if you are so inclined.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you very much.
Pick a Charles.
Thank you, Mr. Massio.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
A few housekeeping items before we move on to the Leland Mansion conversation. The newsletter for spring 2017 was uploaded last Friday for any comments or revisions that are required. If you could please let me know potentially by this Friday at noon, we would like to get that out so that it, we can stay on schedule for this year. The Borough App is set to release and launch on June 21st in conjunction with your public meeting. We'll use that as the catalyst to launch it. You should have received an email with trial options sent from, I think it's Boathouse Apps. And the NCS survey, which was sent in your upload two weeks ago, we are going to hold off on potentially launching that in that we have multiple items that are going on right now with Borough Council that require greater or more in-depth public input. So, to consolidate those efforts and send them out to the public and one is where we are going. So, by all means, please continue to send feedback and we will put a plan together in terms of when it's released and how it's released. My last thing is the Dog Park Advisory Committee. We need some, and Mr. Savona can probably jump in here. We, you voted on creating the Haynes and Salvati Dog Park. We have created the Dog Park Advisory Committee. We need to make that formal through resolution and we need to finalize how we're selecting candidates. So, it's, I was under the impression that we are picking two from the Dog Park, two candidates for the Dog Park Committee that are, that are for the Dog Park specific to the waterfront, two for Ms. Totino's Ward on Haynes and Salvati, and then one outstanding member. So, you'd have a committee of five. And speaking with Mr. Savona this evening, it could range from five to nine if we have an influx of applicants. We do right now, because of the way it was advertised to begin with, have nine applicants from Tina's Ward, Ward, sorry, Ward three, sorry. So, I just need some clarity in terms of how we want to move forward for this year in selecting candidates to that committee.
How was it advertised for you?
So, so it was advertised that they should be part of the ward that the Dog Park was in, in talking with some members of the Dog Park. It is a community dog park. So, the idea of locking down to members from Ward one and your ward, I probably would like to relook at that. And one of the things that we have decided as council is to interview as council. I'm not sure that that committee, based on timing, that we have to do that. So, I would recommend that we create a subcommittee of maybe one or two council people who would like to take that and keep it moving. And since you have that lovely dog and are vested in the Dog Park, I nominate you to to take that and run.
So, what did we do? I don't remember as far as the channel or the communication to determine the-
So, we posted it. So, there, there, we put some guidelines and-
On the website.
On the website, yeah.
Okay. And is that the only channel we use?
Yes.
Yes.
And most of it was because they were already part of the Dog Park. So, this is kind of new for the West Side. So, I would say that we wouldn't want to not keep, start interviewing, but then get that advertised for any additional members, community-wide, that would be interested in being part of it, I think.
And that's what Stephanie and I discussed this afternoon. Because when you originally approved the scope of responsibilities for the committee, it was before we, you guys made the decision to do Haynes Salvati as a, as a Dog Park too. So, technically, when we do a committee, we should pass a resolution that formalizes the structure. And this actually gives us an opportunity, I can have a resolution prepared in two weeks that's based on that original scope, but that expands it to make it clear that the committee will have jurisdiction over both Dog Parks and the members will be appointed from the committee, the community at large and, you know, basically sort of outlining a little more formally. And then from there, once you actually constitute the committee, then you're open to interview and appoint whoever you like. And I, what I was proposing was, because you are covering two parks now and we're not sure the level of interest and you want to capture as many volunteers as possible, rather than limiting it to just five, we'll put it on a sliding scale from five to nine. Nine, over nine gets a little too unwieldy, but that gives you enough manpower, enough personnel that you can cover both parks and, and basically get as many folks involved as possible.
So, to confirm, we are good on one committee with jurisdiction over both Dog Parks. We are opening it up to the community at large to be on that committee and we will move forward with a formal resolution. And we will schedule interviews that Ms. Totino will-
Spearhead.
Spearhead? Okay. So, am I bringing candidates to full council for interviewing or are we doing that as a-
I don't think that that's necessary.
Okay.
For everyone who's integrated, okay. Yeah, I don't think it's necessary.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Nope, we're good.
Okay. Last topic under manager matters is a discussion on the Leland Mansion appraisal. That came into us. We are reintroducing it to you to confirm that you have seen the revised appraisal, that it did come in at $1.1 million. And to further the conversation regarding the direction at this point that you'd like to see it go now that we have the appraisal with the correct numbers in hand.
When you say go, what do you mean?
I'd like to put it out to bid.
Well, I think, to pick up where we left off-
I wish you're looking at-
The last time we talked about this, council wanted to look at the possibility of further consideration, further discussion about leasing the building out if that was a viable option. And you asked that we obtain an appraisal, it was actually an update to an appraisal that was done a number of years ago, to see what the fair market value of the property would be in the event that we decided just to solicit bids. As you know, it's public property, so we'd have to go through a bid, bid process in order to sell it. And it's helpful when you do that to have some sense of what the market value is. So, now that we've gotten the appraisal, the, the value is set at 1.1 million. That was taking into consideration a conservation easement or a facade easement over the exterior of the building. We're really at a point where if council's inclination is to put it out for bid, we could prepare a bid spec, package and, and do that. Again, nothing commits you to selling it unless and until you get something that's satisfactory, but at least we could go to market and test it, given that the real estate market's kind of hot right now, it might be a good time. And we have some sense of the value, so you wouldn't necessarily be rushing into a decision that's perhaps undermarket. Or if, if you're not satisfied with it, the value is appropriate, then you could continue the discussion about what the alternatives are. But given that the appraisal report came back and we haven't had a chance to discuss that yet, we thought it would be appropriate to put it on the agenda and have a discussion.
Can we do anything with the inside of the building? Is, are we restricted to the outside as far as saving the facade or, I mean, there's-
The, if you try to limit the interior, it's going to make it incredibly difficult to market the property.
Okay.
The typically, an exterior facade easement is fairly typical with structures of that, that nature. Wouldn't be difficult to work around. And if someone's going to use it for some purpose and need to update or clarify, the interior can be updated, even if it were for residential use, it would require substantial renovation and modification. Going to bid with that kind of restriction really handicaps you.
So, being that you said that, is there any restriction that keeps us from taking things out of that building and putting them like at Marywood? I mean, there are, there are historical pieces in that building.
Personal portable property or actual pieces of the building?
The railing for one thing that has his initials in it and-
Right. And Jane and I had discussed one of the things also with Marywood Park is one of the-
Please use your microphone.
It's on.
I can't hear you.
Have to turn it down.
One of the, one of the bathrooms we, part of our conversation was bringing it back to its original look. And the discussion was at Leland Mansion, there is the clawfoot tub.
Um, it's not clawfoot.
Well, whatever.
But, but they also have these beautiful sconces on the wall.
Right, and things like that.
Are we permitted to strip it?
Okay, so it's your property?
Can we transfer those to Marywood Park?
Which is a historical property.
The building belongs to you, so you can take out of it whatever you choose to. I think it would be helpful if you're going to do that.
Do it before.
That, right.
Do it before. Start a free for all.
Decide what you're taking out now, so that when we put the property out for bid and it's going to be inspected, whoever the buyers are will take that into account when they're bidding. I wouldn't advocate going to bid, accepting a bid and then stripping. That could be problematic.
There are a few sconces. I would say we have to leave the stained glass windows that are still there.
Oh, yeah, we can't take that.
Because they are fitted to the frame of the building, they couldn't be transferred. But small things like sconces and if-
I was thinking of the Newell's too, have his initials in them. And they're, they're absolutely exquisite.
But that would degrade the integrity of the whole staircase.
So, we replace it with a new Newell.
I don't know. We'll have to talk about that. That's a detail.
Yeah, there are details.
Major.
Yeah.
Right.
So, now we have to decide whether we want to lease it, conduit it or sell it.
Can I just ask a question about the facade first?
Sure.
When you say facade of the, just the mansion house, or is that the property with the stone wall or the carport? the stone wall or the carport? I just need to...
My, in my head, the, the concept of the facade, the, the conservation easement that we've placed on the property would not allow any disturbance of the exterior structure of the building, the porches, the railings, the stone wall, or that carport.
Okay.
So, and, and typically, what, what those restrictions require is that, you know, if there were some issue where they would, structurally it's failing or it requires some modification, then they'd have to get consent of Borough Council to make any revisions. And that consent would be within your discretion. What I have not contemplated doing would be requiring any sort of restrictions on the Carriage House building. Depending on who the buyer is, it's, there's a real possibility that that building may need to be removed, if they're going to add additional parking. It's obviously not been maintained in an historic fashion, so it's, it's probably less significant. It could well be that the ultimate user decides to keep it, but I, I would think it would be unrealistically restrictive to market that with any permanent preservation of that building.
But they can't...
Put it in the market that they can put an elevator on it, in there.
Well, that would be up to them.
That would be on the buyer's.
Right, which depends on their subsequent use.
They can, oh, yeah, they, they could. If they own it, they can. Yeah, if they own it, they can.
They can't put parking in the front based on planning? Where does that come in? Because I...
Well, one would be the, the conservation, the, the preservation easement. If they can't disturb anything in the front yard or...
I just want to make sure that we're clear on that.
We can cover it there, and zoning wouldn't allow them to do that.
Okay, I just want to make sure something we have covers no parking lot in the front of it.
Correct.
And we're selling both buildings, that's one parcel?
It's one property, right?
One property. Police station, you do what they want, right? And they could tear it down if they want to.
Yeah.
Okay.
What are next steps?
It would be up to council at the next meeting to authorize placing it for public bid, and then we can prepare the bid specification package, and you guys will have some time to sort out if there are items from the building you want to remove, and we coordinate the advertising of those specifications.
So if we move forward with that, does that prevent us from still having further conversations about possible alternatives?
No, the only thing we would be doing at this point, you would be, it's administrative at a certain level, so your authorization to put it out for bid would enable Stephanie and I to put together the bid spec package, recommend the minimum bid, decide on a schedule for the advertising. We'll circulate that package to you guys before it would go out to bid, and then we would actually advertise it and solicit the bids. Once the bids come in, you're under no obligation to accept them. So there would, you know, from the time, from, from the May meeting when we would authorize this, you're probably looking at into June or July before the advertisements would go out, probably late summer before the bid packages would come in, and then we'd be talking about this in early fall. And depending on what the numbers are, you have the right to reject all bids if you're not satisfied, or if another use appears that you'd prefer. But all this does really is give us the method to, to decide to sell it if, if there's a, the right deal comes along.
So are you looking for our approval this evening?
Not tonight, no. We can, we'll put it on the agenda for May 17th.
You know, we did this before you.
I, I remember.
I was going to scratch my head and ask that question.
We did do it once before.
What was the last appraisal number?
The number in the last appraisal, I think was...
158,000.
Yeah, it was, it was, it was considerably lower, but I think it was appraised in 2008, which was during the recession, and the real estate market had fallen apart. So we've appreciated significantly since then.
While all this process is going on, I knew that we had someone from Montgomery County come out and talk about potential grant dollars. Is that, is that something that we would still, you were, I think you were working that. Is that something we would still keep moving forward with?
We could, sure.
That could potentially go with the sale of, I, I just, I'm trying to understand all that.
You have to remember that there isn't a, it's not a whole lot of money. I mean, it's not even half of what we would need to restore this building. One, one grant was for approximately 25,000, the other grant was for, it was a match, and I think it was 50,000, and we had to match it with 50...
So the reason I ask is, does that make it more desirable if there is some funding coming from somewhere on a buyer? That's why I ask.
I think we could, at most, I think you could prepare as part of the, the bid package, provide them information where resources like that are available. We, we really couldn't apply to be the grantee on a grant that we would have to transfer to some other purchaser, so...
That, yeah, that's when you get into that muddy water of you and them owning and sharing.
Yeah, I just, I'm looking to make things desirable.
I think it would be good to add that information to the bid package.
Yeah, they can, there's a government site, grant site that they can go to for that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, then we will put that on the agenda for the 17th as well.
Do you have that other resolution with you?
Yes, that's on the, it's under legal matters, yes.
Gotcha.
Okay, moving on, we will...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a comment if I may.
We, public comment is at the end.
This is specific to the mansion?
Come on, you can come.
Our, our method is that public comment is reserved to the end of the meeting, if you don't mind waiting. Thank you. Moving on with department matters, I would like to thank all the department directors for being in the room and managers, so it's appreciated, your presence at the work session, so thank you. Oh, if you could please stand so that we can see you.
Oh, look how happy they are.
Okay, sit down.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will start with the, considering the approving the revised D C E D program procedures for the rehabilitation program. Chris Stettler, if you can please come to the podium.
One of the requirements for our housing rehabilitation program is that any changes to the general procedures, guidelines have to be approved by Borough Council. For the past two years, the State Department of Community and Economic Development have been revising their guidebook for housing rehabilitation programs. They want more even administration of the programs across the state. So they finally finished it, and we are now in the position of trying to bring our program procedures in line with the state guidebook to the extent that we can without making too many drastic changes to the program. So I'm just going to go through what we feel are changes. We've also added into the program procedures that you were given, things that we've been doing for a long time but were never in the procedures. We've added an introduction which clearly states that the program is a one-time-only deferred payment loan program. That is a major change from the outright grant program that we have been doing for the past 30 to 40 years. And the reason for that is that we have been pressured for the last 20 years to make a change from an outright grant program to some kind, to have some kind of guarantee of the benefit to low, moderate income homeowner for a period of time. So what they don't want happening is someone getting the rehabilitation of the house and then turning around and selling it. We have always required that our, our participants stay in the house for two years after the completion of the, of the rehabilitation. We have had one instance that I know of where the home was sold that we didn't have no, notice of it. If we get any inkling that there's somebody thinking of selling the house after rehab, we put a lien on the property. And we've done that in two or three cases. It doesn't happen very often. The biggest thing that happens with this is someone passes away or has to move into a nursing home and can no longer stay in the, in the, in the, in the house. So that is one of the major changes. We've also added into the guidelines or into the general procedures, the priorities that we are required to use for the home program. Several years ago, the state decided they wanted to get the biggest bang they could for their buck. So for home money only, we have to prioritize rather than have a first come, first served. Now, I think we have been terribly creative about making sure that we keep people moving in the system. If it's someone that doesn't meet one of the criteria, we know they really need the work, we'll pay for it out of C D B G funds. So the priorities are basically anyone on, at 50% or under the area median income or who live near the redevelopment area along the river. Now, those areas would be Elm Street to the south side of Spring Mill Avenue on the east side, and West Elm to West Fourth Avenue on the west side. It's something, we've been involved in doing this for, for the past, I think, two grants, two or three grants that we've gotten for home funds. We also were required to decide what information in, in, of the program is public information, because we deal with a lot of people who really don't want a lot of their information out before the public. So what we are looking at and proposing is that the name and address of the property, the total amount of the rehabilitation costs, those would be the public, be public information that would be available based on a right-to-know request. We also included the, the policy for emergency repairs, which is a little better than what we had before, however, someone has got to be on the waiting list. The state's now allowing us to, what we had been doing was, we would do an emergency repair if we could rehabilitate the entire property within six months. The state's made that 12 months, so we're going to kind of sync up with that. We added information on lead paint and radon, that we will be testing all of our properties for those. The other major change is that we now are trying to establish an upper, we are establishing an upper limit to the amount of money we will put into a house. And for home money, you can't spend any less than $1,000. And we have been in a few houses where we were a little worried about that just because of the way the ladies kept their houses and the way people maintained their houses in Conshohocken. We're trying to set an upward limit of $25,000, which is moderate rehabilitation, and we can add to that the cost of reducing lead-based paint hazards, the cost of reducing radon, and the cost of permits. There are a couple of reasons for this. It would, this would reduce the number, we've also built in some discretion if a house is in really bad shape and we need to go above $25,000, but this would be an attempt to reduce the number of properties that we would be required to use Pennsylvania prevailing wage for, because that has, we, we bid one project at prevailing wage and we could maybe do four or five houses with the $350,000 we have. So that has, that was an issue. As I said, the deferred payment loan would be, I think Mr. Savona had previously suggested that it'd be done in the form of a second, second mortgage, we're proposing a four-year term. 25% of the loan would be forgiven each year, the person stays in the house, and then totally released at the end of four years. And that is for any change, any sale, transfer of ownership, or if the person moves out of the house, out of the house completely. Most of the areas for contractors are just adding things that we have been doing for a number of years. It just clarifies some of the, the procedures, how we deal with bid, with bids. The documents, we're still in the process of revising all of our documents because there's some, some of the agreements say one thing, some of the agreements say it's contradictory, so we're trying to clean that up with what we're doing currently. We are now giving our contractors three weeks to start their projects. The state has become very insistent that the projects move along and that they complete, be completed in a timely fashion. We have a limited number of contractors, and we've been very generous with them, and we kind of felt that some of them were taken a little bit of advantage. So we will, they will have to start their, their, start the work within three weeks of signing contracts, and they have to get their permits. They have to get their permits the day they sign the contracts. So we can't say, oh, well, I'm not getting the, I'm not getting the permits until I'm ready to do the electrical work. No, you get them now. And then they have 90 days to complete the work. And that, those, I believe, are the major changes that we've made. Any questions or comments or things you think we've forgotten, please let me know.
One quick thing, Chris.
Sure.
You might have said it, but, and I'm very familiar with this program.
I know.
If, if a husband or wife and, and they get sick and they have to go into the home, they need the money. Say they get sick after the first year.
Mm-hmm.
And they need that money to go into a home, do they still get penalized?
If one of them goes in the home and they...
Oh, no, no, if there's just one or...
Just one person in the home?
Yeah, one person, yeah.
In the past, we've forgiven that. At this point, it would depend, if the house was sold, we would want the, that, you know, three-quarters of the rehab money back.
Even if the money needed to go to the home to...
We can deal with, we can look at that on a case-by-case basis, but...
That is within our discretion?
We can add discretion to it. We, I, I don't want to get in the point where we're, we're going back on what we, what we have been doing is, if someone has to move out of the home or go into the nursing home, we forgive the loan. Many times, those people have been there almost the whole two years. The, the problem with this is that we deal with a lot of elderly people. I mean, we have a lady who is 85 going through the program right now, and one who is on the way in, who is 95. So, but the state has been extremely, I mean, I've been arguing this with the state for 20 years, and they, you know, they've now got a lot, the state has a lot of pressure on them from HUD to make sure that this money is, is not being used for other things. So I, I, I'm going to say that we will look at it on a case-by-case basis, Bob.
Thank you.
And in case you don't know, the reason Bob knows so much about this is he was one of the contractors.
I've already shorted.
Yeah, you stopped before I started.
Any more questions?
Anything else? Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris. An update on the C D B G curb ramp project contract. Bids will be received on May 11th, and there will be a recommendation for council to consider at the regular, regular public meeting on the 17th. It is basically building handicap ramps, and mostly in Ms. Leonard's ward. We have $20,000 from 2014, $20,000 from 2015 that will be utilized in this 27th, 2017 process.
Okay. Is that the last area that we need ramps?
Mr. Hughes?
No.
No, but it'll, it'll go a long way to completing that area, so it'll be a big step right there.
If we want to use C D B G funds for additional ramps, because of changes in the guidance that the state has provided for this type of project, we're going to have to do a review of all these streets in the borough. We've done a lot of this in the past, and one of the major requirements is that being on a rural public place. I mean, we have been doing that, we've been doing that since we started it, but whether or not we can do more, it'll depend on the review of the streets and where the ramps we need now. Or, and that's only to use C D B G funds, because ramps are considered, is it planned? People with disabilities are considered to be low, and it's, it's a presumed benefit for low and moderate income people. So it's not like they can just say, we're going to do it along the riverfront because that problem will involve, but going through the streets that need, that need it. And we also cannot replace curb ramps that we have already done, even if they're not up to the current standard the state has.
And on that note, if we're doing those curb ramps, if you do a road program, does that all have to get torn up? So is it, oh...
Mr. Hughes, if you can please come forward, thank you.
So would we be doing it twice?
I'll get to that i- in a roundabout way. So the infrastructure study that I'm doing does include the ramps. So far, I've done all of the west side and getting ready to go out and do the east side, kind of when our, our heavy park projects that are going on right now settle down. And I am taking note of where we have ramps but where they're not compliant, which I think is important, because if they're in good condition and they were done fairly recently and they're perfectly usable, trying to make sure that we don't spend more money there until we need to. So we're going to get ramps where we don't have ramps. Paving with liquid fuels dollars can be tricky if audited, if they send an inspector out to look at the site. That being said, I can't stand here in public and say that we haven't paved a street in front of a ramp that is not fully compliant, and, you know, we've left them there, because it just doesn't make sense to spend the money twice. And, and in my experience, they're not necessarily sending somebody around with a, with a smart level and measuring every square inch of these ramps to make sure that they're fully compliant or, and then taking the liquid fuels money away. That has literally never happened in my experience. That being said, there are occasions where we might pave a block and kind of stop short of the corners as a mechanism to say, well, we didn't, we didn't pave through an intersection, so we're not required by their rules to upgrade all those ramps. That being said, sometimes that just doesn't make a whole lot of sense. So, like, for instance, Maple Street, there's probably a handful of those ramps that look really nice, but if you put the level on them, you're going to find that there's a couple, a couple issues there. But there's nothing wrong with them structurally, and they're perfectly functional for the, for accessibility. So yes, we're, we're definitely considering ramps that are in place that are not necessarily in full compliance and in good condition as something that we're not going to make a priority to spend money on.
How do we determine where ramps should be? Where is it required or...
Yeah, we have, we have wood that doesn't even have a pavement.
There's, yeah...
Well, it's where, it's a route that's accessible by a person with a disability or handicap.
What's interesting-
Has to have a ramp that, that makes that passage accessible.
It's really for public, a lot of it is more for public facilities, like, there's, when you read through it, you know, it talks about having a reasonable, some kind of reasonable pathway to get, accessible route to get where, where people need to go, public facilities. So theoretically, you don't necessarily need to have ramp crossings at every intersection, but at the same time, in, in terms of a long-term plan, it usually makes sense to do so. They're kind of convenient for everybody, in my opinion. But for sake of argument, if you're at one intersection and you can easily go one way, block that way and one block that way, and you can create an accessible route, like we talk about a lot on Fayette Street, where there are traffic lights and it's safer anyway, you, we, we could have in long-term planning years ago, say, we're going to create crossings at the intersections that have signals, and actually leave the other ones out, not put ramps in at all. And we're, we're saying publicly, we're, we're providing, within a reasonable distance, a safe, accessible crossing. Not necessarily at every single intersection. That being said-
Or corners.
As we go, you know, we're looking at things where, you know, we might have areas that are depressed or are just kind of, you know, things over time that just aren't quite built right. Maybe you don't actually have a raised curb, and you can kind of make your way, but we're literally looking at areas where, you know, you're walking down the sidewalk, and maybe you have a curb ramp on one corner, and then, let's say, you get to the alley and you've got an eight-inch curb on this side, an eight-inch curb on this side, and if you do need it to be accessible, you're stuck. So for instance, in this project, we're doing two alley intersections where we have ramps on either end, but the, the alley's not done. So now that someone can get from one side of the block all the way to the other by, by putting ramps at the alleys. So there's, you, you could look at it more selectively. So far, we haven't necessarily chosen to do that, simply because, again, I think ultimately, if there's accessibility that's throughout the whole borough, that's going to be looked at most favorably by anyone that could possibly come in and audit the borough for accessibility.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. At this time, I will turn the meeting over to Mr. Savona for legal matters.
Okay, we'll try to run through these relatively quickly. The first item is, we designated by adopting ordinance 2017-4 last month that council would by resolution designate dog parks or dog-friendly parks, because we've lifted the absolute prohibition to having dogs in any of the borough parks. I will need to prepare a resolution for your approval next month. First would be to include the existing dog park and to add Haynes-Salvetti Park, because we actually never did approve an exemption for those two parks. But lastly, there had been some discussion about what other borough park we wanted to make dog-friendly, but not necessarily a dog park. So I'm just looking for some clarity as to whether we've made that decision, or you've have further discussion of that, so we can get that codified and approved.
I think last meeting, we, we pretty much just decided on Mary Wood Park.
Mary Wood?
And we tried for, see how that goes before we add new parks to the list.
Try with that one first and-
But they would have to be on a leash, and there's language in there that would-
Right.
Say the owner has to control their pet at all times.
We can, we can, we can do some appropriate language.
Okay.
On the leash at all times, under supervision.
Right.
Not out of, out of the presence of the owner.
Right.
Clean up after the dog, that sort of thing.
Right.
Okay. Then we will, I'll have a resolution to go along with the Dog Park Committee resolution for your approval next meeting. Next item is consideration of what's been numbered, Resolution 2017-05. We discussed this at the last meeting. This is a formal resolution by Borough Council opposing the proposed elimination of the Community Development Block grant funding from the federal fiscal year budget for 2017 to 2018. Council, with the last meeting, we discussed that the, the current version of the budget, or the budget that was proposed by the administration, would have eliminated the CDBG program, so you asked that we prepare a resolution stating the borough's support of the continuation of that program. So that resolution is, is part of your packet and could, could be voted on if there's some time sensitivity. You could do that this evening.
Yes, there is. I need to get the, before the PSAB conference this weekend. And we just need signatures on that?
Well, you need a motion-
But I need your support.
You have to have a motion to approve Resolution 2017-5.
Well, I'll make that motion.
A second.
I got, I got a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Very well. The next resolution will be 2017-06. This is a proposed resolution to extend the life of the municipal authority. So, we haven't done this since quite a while ago, 1986, I believe. The Borough Council is empowered to authorize the creation of the municipal authority under the Municipal Authorities Act. When we do that, effectively, we're incorporating the authority, naming the first set of officers, and then filing that paperwork with the Department of State. As you know, you appoint the authority board members thereafter, but because you did create the authority, otherwise, it's separate and distinct. Under the statute, an authority can only exist for periods of 50 years. So every 50 years, it has to be re-upped, or else it goes out of existence. You probably know that the Conshohocken Authority is the successful bidder for the West Conshohocken sewer system. They are going to, I think it's a $9.5 or so million deal, that they are going to finance. The term of their financing is going to require that the loan will go beyond the current term of existence of the authority, which takes you to 2036. So in order to satisfy their lender and to, to square up what they need to do in order to, to lock down the financing, they've asked, and then they did approve a formal resolution that they sent over to me yesterday, they asked the council to consider a, a resolution extending the life of the authority. So we've prepared Resolution 6 of 2017, which would extend the term of existence of the authority until May 15th of 2067, which just takes it 50 years from today. Obviously, somebody else will worry about it at that point. This will be a one-and-done for us for, forever. But that resolution will be on for approval at the next meeting.
Got a question.
Yes.
Now, they're making this, taking over West Conshies Park, who fulfills their obligation if they fail?
If what fails?
If fails.
If the loan, if they fail their, their finances and they can't, I don't want to use the word-
So, to this point, they're, they have not asked, and to my understanding, they're not asking us to agree to underwrite the loan. Because there, in some instances, the, the underwriting bank, and if you're going out to a bond issue, we are sometimes asked to adopt an ordinance which pledges our taxing authority to the debt or obligation of the municipal authority. They're not asking us to do that in this case. This is what we would call self-liquidating debt, and they're not, I don't believe they're doing a bond issue, they're doing just a general obligation note like we did. So the banks are not requiring them to get us to basically co-sign for the loan. So the authority will be on the hook in and of themselves, and they'll have to address the rates that they need to raise in order to pay the debt if something goes flue. It won't be on the borough.
I know, I just want to say it again. Half of the people in this borough think we own that authority, and we don't. I mean, probably more than half. And the new people coming in, because it says the Conshohocken-
Well, and the other half don't know it exists, so it's-
Yeah, right. Until they go down there and they, I don't want to say it very, but.
It's better.
Huh?
It's better.
Yeah. But I just want to know, whatever, anything ever happens down there financially, are we responsible?
No.
The Borough of Conshohocken?
No. No, not now, not ever.
Okay.
They're their own corporation.
Yeah, I know.
Okay. The next item under my matter, I'm just going to group them together. Council will have for consideration in two weeks, a reconvened hearing on both the SP4 zoning amendment and the conditional use that's been filed by Sora or Keystone for the shared parking provisions that are provided under the SP4 ordinance. So council is cer- certainly well-familiar with the SP4 zoning ordinance amendment, we've had several hearings on this. After our last advertised public hearing, there were a number of revisions to the ordinance that were based on some of the comments that we had during the course of the hearings. The, we just, we determined that the amendments or changes were substantive, as that's defined under the Municipalities Planning Code. So the ordinance has been re-refered to the County Planning Commission, and we will convene a new hearing to review those changes, which really focus around the provisions that they had, that Keystone had proposed, to add reserved parking, or to hold certain parking in reserve, and some changes to the use of the office buildings, which previously had been all commercial and now would be permitted to be a mixed use between condominiums or residential and office. So with those revisions, we will convene a new hearing on the SP4 ordinance that will satisfy the municipal planning code requirements. And then, we have also advertised it for council's consideration in the event that you wish to vote to approve the ordinance. Concurrently, if, if we do decide to approve the ordinance, Keystone filed a conditional use application. Under the terms of the SP4 ordinance, in order for them to take advantage of the shared parking provisions, which provide for the peak and off-peak staggering of parking requirements, they are required to get council's approval by conditional use. So that process also requires a hearing, so we've advertised for a hearing to go on simultaneously, so we're trying to wrap up these zoning issues. They will present the traffic study and all of the required supporting documents that support what they need to prove to get the conditional use, and then council will have the opportunity to consider conditions of approval for the, for the conditional use, most particularly providing public parking, as we've discussed over the course of the last several months. So those will both, they've both been, both been advertised. They will both be before the Planning Commission for a final round of reviewing comments on May the 11th. It's our hope that we can convene that hearing and move to some sense of closure on the Keystone zoning issues on May 17th. Also related, but slightly different, Keystone has asked for a, a further extension of the agreement of sale, which governs the, their purchase of the lots and the firehouse. Currently, that agreement expires at the end of June. They're obviously not in a position to close on that yet, because we're, we're just dealing with wrapping up the zoning issues, and we haven't even begun to, to consider the land development plan. So they've asked for a one-year extension. It would be my recommendation to grant that. That'll push the deadline out until 2018, and will give us time to finish consideration of the remainder of that project. So that extension will be on for your consideration and approval on the 17th as well. And that's all I have, unless you guys have questions.
Any questions?
Yeah. We'll move on to council member matters and mayor matters. Ms. Saklowski, if you'd like to start regarding the Comprehensive Plan Task Force?
Sure, I just wanted to give everybody an update on where we are. We had our first meeting with the Comprehensive Plan Task Force. We had all but one member, well, actually, I should say, two members that didn't attend. One had a conflict, and one, I was remiss in remind, remembering to invite Mrs. Barton to the meeting, so.
She is forgiven.
I, I apologize. But it was a good meeting. The planner, Judy from Boucher James, went through what the comprehensive plan is, what we would be looking at as far as a tentative schedule, timelines, and kind of went through what community activities will be, that the community will be able to come in and have input, and how that would work. And then, just the idea of when we have assignments, there's going to be reading assignments that will do the work outside of the meeting, so at the meeting, we're actually doing work on the comprehensive plan. So there'll be subcommittees and, and different pieces feeding into the comprehensive plan. Part of it will be the Parks and Recs, part of it will be land development. So there's a, so there's a lot of moving parts to it, but I, the team was very energized, a lot of ideas were going on. Stephanie, you were there. What was your observation for the team?
I think that they have a, they understand the vision and they understand what the intent of the plan is, and I think you have multiple personalities that will serve you well in each different area, in what you're attempting to compile.
So what we're doing right now is, the biggest challenge was organizing calendars. That was the most fun part. So we will be getting the minutes out, identifying, we're, for the most part, going to look at the first Monday of the month for meetings here in the building. And then, there are some Mondays that are holidays that we've looked at some alternate dates. So more to come out. The, the first activity is going to be a tour of the borough, where the task force and council has been invited, and it'll be, these meetings are open and public meetings, so if community is out there, they can come along. But the idea is, we would go to different sections of the borough, and we would pick which sections, she'll, the, the planner will give us some overall ideas of what it is she's looking for. We'll okay the plan, but we'll go to different sections of the borough, and she'll ask questions that generate thought and conversation from the folks around there, and then they'll document everything we say, and then bring it back to the team to see where that fits into the idea of our strategic vision for the borough. So I think that that's going to be an interesting event.
What's the date of that?
And that's May 31st at 5:30 PM. The tour will start here.
Starts here, Tina?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, the public particip-
It's a Monday.
Oh, it's a Monday.
It's a Monday. It's a Wednesday night.
It's a Wednesday.
Yeah. It's the fifth Wednesday of the month, so we were able to kind of fit it in.
Oh, we got it. Yep.
The, the one that I'm really excited about is the public participation visioning process, and that sounds like that's going to be very interesting, and how that's kind of put together. So, group was excited, lots of feedback, we're looking at our communication and how we share communication and things right now. So, so that's where we stand with the task force. I do have one more thing that came up, this, just yesterday. The Colonial Neighborhood Council came to me and wanted to, wanted me to ask council, they're on, going to have their 50th year anniversary, and they're looking to do a block party to celebrate that on June 22nd, and they'd like to close the 100 block down from four to eight, to have that block party, where the community would be invited to it. And they asked-
I think it's, I, I believe it's their alleyway, which, it's not.
Not to interrupt. They, they wanted it on the street. They were told they couldn't have it on the street.
Correct, okay.
They wanted it on the street.
So then they were moving it, but they would prefer the street.
Okay.
So. And where?
Fourth Avenue.
Fourth Avenue. Between Harry and Hall.
The one, the 100 block of East.
Tell Mike what's going on, tell Mike.
So, one of the questions that we have for Mike is, is there consideration for the police if we close that? I, I know that we do block parties.
It would require to give us some advance notice, less than a week would be fine. The only consideration would be state highway, which it's not, so we coordinate having barricades dropped, but, and the only one thing we'd like to do is check to see if there's any other neighborhood events that would conflict with it immediately, but no, there's no rush.
Okay. All right, great.
And Mike, one more question. The other block parties that have gone on recently, there have been no-
No problems.
No problems, correct?
No, no, it's just, just some notice, that's all we need.
That's it.
So we can facilitate that and make sure it's not conflicting with any construction projects or anything like that, that we didn't know about, and use the same time to cross-check it.
Okay.
So is there a procedure or form people have to fill out, or? So there, there is an operational permit, that groups that are interested in block parties should come to the office to fill out and complete. And that's available in the office? That's available up in the office. Okay. The, if there's consideration from council, that there is a fee associated with that permit, that you'd like to waive it, if you could just make that motion?
I will motion that.
Well, second and third and fourth, that motion for them.
Absolutely. Can a form be taken too, Sandy?
We can coordinate if that works best for her, yes.
Yeah, okay.
If you can get me her contact information, then I'll make sure it gets taken care of.
All right, I can do that, sure.
Thank you.
And that concludes my council updates.
Next is Ms. Flanagan for the Mary Wood Park Commission.
We have made some very good progress with Ike and Colleen and myself. We appointed earlier in the year four new people. One, Joe Collins, has been a fixture and the backbone of the organization for a long time. But what we are looking at is, in the year 2020, on July 4th, the Mary Wood Park will celebrate its centennial. So through the generosity of Mary Wood, we have been given this wonderful piece of property with both historical value and also the healthy community part being our community center, and the park itself. So we're looking at the entire state- So we're looking at the entire state as one project, and what we are thinking is that we would restore Marywood Park. Mrs. Wood gave us this property 100 years ago, and we owe it to her and her family and her legacy to restore it and preserve it for the next 100 years. And if you take a walk past the building, it does need quite extensive repairs. And it's been fixed over the years, but now it's time to really restore it. We're looking at the community center, and what that would have to be done is to update it to present and future uses for our residents. And then the park itself actually has no equipment for children ages two to five, and they have no adaptive equipment except one swing for children with disabilities. So we have several pieces of this project that we're talking about, and we've had two organizational meetings that have gone very well. And on May 8th, we're having our third meeting, and we've invited community leaders from all the different civic organizations that have volunteered tremendously for our town, but we're trying to do a unified project. And we've asked people from, the police chief is going to come to give his insights onto the security issues that we might face. There's so many different pieces that we as council, I know they exist, but we don't know what to plan for. And the same with the fire company, and Mr. Sokolowski's coming because he has the knowledge of the buildings and the parks. And we just see it opening up to the whole community. At the same time with the comprehensive plan, I think it's wonderful that we're opening all these channels for citizens to be involved. The next thing would be probably in June, we'll have an open meeting. So I just wanted to give you that update and say that, you know, we're very excited and I think it's going very well.
Right, and our long-term goal is to make that area a hub for Conshohocken, for the residents, for events, things like at Christmas, at 4th of July, to make that a center stone for everything, for all the residents to use and enjoy. Because it's just a great area and it's a beautiful area and there's so much to offer between the house and the park and the village and the community center. So that's our goal.
And one of the things Anita mentioned was taking what would transfer easily over to the Park House from Leland Mansion. As much as we hate the idea of letting go of part of our history, the Park House is our legacy and that has been there for 100 years. So I feel that, you know, that will, for some of us that are emotional about letting go of Leland Mansion, it will also soothe us and alleviate those anxiety pains because we have our, we have this true history that is just ideal for all the community events like the different things Colleen mentioned.
Right, the soapbox derby, so the Fun Fest. So now that the Fun Fest is back on Farnes Street, like one of our goals is to extend things down to be able to use that whole area. Even for things in the summer, like we have concerts at Suck Cliff, we can have them there. Movie night, just a lot of different things to pull in and be able to use that building. I couldn't tell you how many, I can't imagine how many people that live in Conshohocken and have lived here all their lives have never even been in that Park House. And it's a shame because it is a beautiful historic building that we really need to put, to better use for our residents and the community. And that's one of our goals of council, just not with the Park House, with what we're doing with the parks. It's to bring, is to give back to the residents what they should be enjoying and using. So that's been our primary goal, and this is a huge extension of it that we're planning to do. It's a great project, so.
Any other council member matters?
Yes.
Any more?
Ms. Barton?
Oh, I'm just really excited because on Tuesday, Eleanor and Kate will be coming up to the PSAB conference in Hershey to accept an award for our borough, for our newsletter and our website. And I'm really pleased to be able to present that to them.
Congratulations.
Any other comments? Public comment?
I don't know what you have.
Public a comment? Oh, here they go.
Please come to the podium.
Hi, good evening. I haven't ever spoken at a council meeting, I'm sorry, losing my voice, allergies. My name is Jamison Sinalee, I live at 204 Maple Street, apartment one. I've come to representing the 200 block of Maple Street about the construction in our, not our meadow, but all of our meadow, right? And, yeah, the Second Avenue Meadow and the development of the children's play area there. So I just want to give you a little background about me. I've lived in the borough for six years. My fiance and I run an electronics recycling company in Collegeville. We're stout environmentalists, and this is kind of one of the reasons that we're here. I'm doing my best not to be fired up, okay? So on behalf of the block, we were rather surprised on Monday morning at 6:30 when a flatbed truck rolled a caterpillar into our meadow, woke up our 88-year-old neighbor because we did not have notice about any of this stuff happening. Now, this summer, I had, about a month and a half ago, I had contacted the borough about using the Second Avenue Meadow for a very special joint family reunion between my girl and I. We had a nice little idea to bring our family here from all over the country and have a barbecue. We've already hired a caterer, really good barbecue, by the way. Zachary's up in Norristown, awesome stuff. And I had talked to Karen one morning when I saw her walking her dog and asked, you know, how was that permission thing going? Because I had spoken to the fellowship house, and it was kind of an odd request. You guys don't rent out the meadow. And, you know, everyone was cool with it. I got permission to use it for the event. And I'm rather upset about the timing of said situation. And that's regardless, that's my own personal thing. I'm here to represent my block. So the first question I have for you guys, we're not obviously here to fight it. Two of my neighbors had to leave, they were here earlier, but they had prior commitments. So we just want answers, and hopefully this can help the council for future projects to communicate with the community a little bit more effectively, okay? So my, our first question is why was nobody who lives adjacent to said piece of land notified of any intent to even bring us into something that you guys voted on and approved? We could have had our voices heard prior to this. So that's my first question. I don't know who wants to answer that, but.
For first thing, people come to council meeting, they will find out about it. And then it's on the council, it's on our website. Everything that happens at council meeting, at the voting meeting, it's on the website.
Okay.
On the website.
Okay.
You need to come to council meetings for a lot of stuff, then you'll find out what's going on.
Okay, I mean, that's awesome. That's a great answer. However, in the age of technology, I follow More Than the Curve all the time, all the time. That's how I follow the borough. So perhaps a suggestion to council, maybe utilize that website a little bit more. I don't really, I usually-
Is that on our website?
I understand.
Can I respond to that? And there was, there was something that Kevin had put out on More Than the Curve, indicating that it was going to be a dog park.
It was-
I mean, I'm sorry, I'm flipping it, the other one-
It was on May 1st at 3:00 PM, seven hours after ground was broken.
No.
That that press release was put out. I went back two and a half months on More Than the Curve, as far as you can go back. So I don't know, I mean-
Kevin, you had it after-
I think I did a story to say that that was a dog park.
I'm sorry?
I think I did a story to say that was a park before that.
Yes, you did, you definitely did. And I know that only because I received a lot of, you know, comments and questions and generally excitement.
When Pico wants to install a water meter on the side of my house like they did last weekend, they give me a letter. They put it in my mailbox or on my door, something physical to notify people. I'm just thinking, I'm trying to avoid this sort of reaction when you guys developed the dog park at Wood and Colewell, I don't know the name of that park, but the one you're replacing the playground and now putting in the Second Avenue Meadow. I'm just suggesting this, all right?
One of the good things is now that we're going to release the Borough app for your phones, what I would say is More Than the Curve has lots of information, but if you want borough-specific information, I would recommend utilizing the Borough tools because we do have them, and we just heard that we are getting some awards for some of it.
Right.
So I hear you loud and clear, and I think that if you had had that information, you would have seen that information earlier than that day as well.
Okay. It was just the timeline had never been discussed. Even when we spoke, Karen, there was no timeline. And I honestly would have requested that maybe we could delay it or something like that. I don't know if that would have done any good, but that's regardless, that's a moot point. Moving on. Major concern for the neighborhood is parking. We already are struggling with parking. Perhaps permits could be issued of some sort.
We have it now.
We're already struggling with parking. If I come home after 8:00 PM, I'm parked two blocks down the street, generally. I'm parked near your house.
The whole thing began is that there are two parks in our Ward, Ward one. And what we're looking to do, we had equipment that was already earmarked to go into Haynes Silvati. I don't know if you're familiar with the park, if you've been down there and if you see it. I think you would agree that moving to the meadows is a much better alternative than having that as a play area for children. We've talked about the accessibility, we've talked about how it's kind of tucked away. It may not be the safer area of the two. Lots of congestion, difficulty in the travel there, and a smaller number of residents that can utilize that.
Okay.
While down there, I had talked to folks that were in the Grand and in Cunningham about what their thoughts are relative to it being a dog park, very supportive.
I've been wondering how you said that, how you say that, by the way. Kind of, kind of out of town?
Cuny Town.
Cuny Town.
I've never heard anyone pronounce it, I've only read it, so.
Right, so it was, it was received very well. Many of the folks there, it seemed were, had more dogs than they had children. And it made a lot more sense for us to then kind of flip that and put that equipment into the meadows. So the meadows is an area that's the borough's, and it makes good sense for us to have an area for children to play. To answer your question about parking, we have parks throughout the borough. You know, we have Suck Cliff, we have Up the A Field, et cetera. Generally speaking, people aren't driving to those parks. It's not a facility where they're going and they're going inside. This is an outdoor play area where we're going to find people in the ward, the immediate area, that are going to go and use that park. So I, there, one, isn't a requirement in any way to add parking for that, and two, I don't see that that would even be something that would be necessary if you have one or two people that drive there, but in all likelihood, that would be the case.
All right, I hope you're right.
The Suck Cliff part draws from the whole borough. Everybody goes to Suck Cliff.
Right.
This situation, this isn't a full playground. I don't know if you, it's, it's-
Well, I've seen it, I've seen the area. It's not, you can't put the same thing, same facilities you have in Suck Cliff there, obviously.
Did you see that area? And I went down and saw how it staked off where the flags are. And that can be confusing because what's important to know is that there is one piece of equipment that has several different parts to it. Then there is a swing set that I think has maybe four swings or four, five-
Approximately four.
Four swings on it. Those are the only two pieces of equipment that are going in. There's going to be a part, and only, you'll be familiar with this, knowing it as well. But, so from the back of your house, looking that way, in the far right corner, there's some like evergreens or trees like that, there's going to be a picnic table that's put in there, wheelchair accessible, and that will be a nice little, it provides some shade, so that will be an area there. So if you think about it in terms of the length of the park, so from both sides of the parking areas, if you're looking at it from that, it's almost divided evenly that this closer to the-
The ridge.
The townhouses, I guess, right. Is where the equipment will be. The other side is open space.
Right. It cuts my bocce game in half. I mean, that's not your problem, but.
Well, the bocce club is-
Right, but yeah, I like playing bocce with hills and, you know, I don't know, it's, it's not, that's not your concern, guys.
Well, you know, actually, though, to say that, part of the reason that it was very important to retain some of that open space is for that reason. So that maybe kids want to go down and if they want to, you know, play soccer in an area, throw football or anything like that, that was the intent of still maintaining some open space.
Right. I mean, another concern of our neighbors as well, some of whom have pets and fenced in yards, is that quite often already, children will play baseball, football, whatever, that's what it's there for. It's great, awesome. Now their space to do so is cut in half, and we already have issues with them coming into our yards to retrieve lost objects. So I don't want my dog running around the neighborhood because some kid didn't latch my fence, and now they have less space. Now, this is not something I understand that we can, we can change. I'm just voicing the grievances of myself and my neighbors. The other questions, speaking of the nice trees that were, that's going to be used as a picnic area, two perfectly good eight-year-old trees were killed in this scenario. And being an environmentalist, it hurts me, it pains me to see a front-end loader rip a tree out of the ground. It really does. I am a mem, I'm not a member, I'm sorry. I work with an organization in Fairmount Park, a nonprofit, that would have happily taken those trees. And I could have gotten, two landscapers that I play disc golf with in Fairmount Parks, friends of Sedgley Woods, would have come down and picked this, those trees up with, if they had been rootballed, and they would have been planted. They're losing trees in that disc golf course faster than they can plant them because of fungus and because of caterpillars and things like that. I'm just asking the borough maybe to be a little bit more, I understand the cost of transplanting a tree versus planting a new tree, and I get that. But if it's something you could donate, that'd be pretty cool.
I completely agree with you. I, and I'm on the same page. It wasn't something that we were able, because I even thought there's many other places within the borough.
Right.
But it wasn't something, we talked about it, and it wasn't because of associated costs and it wasn't as easy as just digging out the tree and-
We brought our landscape architect to the site to evaluate what the best option was for those two trees, and under her recommendation, that was the decision that was made.
Right, and I tried to make an emergency rescue, and I came home from my workshop and they were dead, and, you know, it just made me sad. Going back to the environmental aspect, we, there used to be public trash cans and recycling cans available at that space, and I know a couple of my neighbors really messed that up by putting bulk trash there, and those cans were removed. I would request that we have some sort of facility so that there's not litter everywhere, some sort of, you know, okay, receptacles.
Right, over near the, where the park bench, there's going to be that picnic sort of table. There's going to be receptacles for trash and-
That is correct.
Recycling as well?
We can make that happen.
Could you? That'd be great, please.
No, that's a good idea because people will have water bottles and-
Yep.
Yeah.
The, are there going to be any lights installed?
I don't think there's a plan right now to add any additional lighting.
Okay, because that's something we would all definitely be completely opposed to. Now, this also raises the question of, we were all teenagers at one time, and when we were drinking, causing trouble, smoking, hanging out, we usually went to the playground. So we don't want lights, but we also don't want a dark environment where that sort of situation can happen.
Look, I don't know that a playground would change that. I mean, if they've been hanging out in the meadows before, I don't know. But that was another strong consideration of why we should move the equipment from Haynes Silvati up there, because that is something that, when that, when it's dark down there and it's tucked away, it's not somewhere that, you know, children should be. It makes a lot more sense as a dog park, you're going to probably have people there at various times, but that in, in some respect, they'll sort of be policing that area themselves. So I wouldn't expect, unless you already have a problem there and then you need to know about it, we will let the police officers know.
Okay.
But, and if something happens, certainly we can have somebody periodically. In fact, we probably have, I mean, we do have a really strong police presence in the community. We're very lucky that way. very lucky that way. So if for any reason they need to drive down that, that one dead end more frequently, we'll be happy to have that.
Of anywhere I've ever lived, and I've lived in a lot of places, I think that the Concha Hockin Police Force is the best one that I've ever encountered in my life, so I have, I'm aware, and it's, I'm hoping that the problem doesn't exist, but it was just, again, I'm the voice of my neighbors.
No, and thank you, I appreciate it, I know Judy was here, and it looks like she had a little stuff.
Yeah, so, I mean, I know you spoke to her earlier. The other questions, can you, first off, before I start asking about details, is there somewhere we can view the plans and the rendering of the completed projects? Like, is it on the web, I didn't see it on the website.
On the website, but I can probably...
We can pull pictures of the apparatuses that are actually going to be installed. We can either send them to you, or you can come to the office.
Okay, does that include plans for the walking path, the pedestrian bridge, and the fence as well? I know that's kind of a separate situation.
That is a, a separate contractor project, so the borough at this point wouldn't be able to provide that until those plans are finalized through the contractor. But if, once the plans are turned in to our office, you would be able to view them, I believe, there's nothing...
So there's still some fluidity as far as the planning and construction of that?
You've been up there for him with what you call, you only have two minutes, you got more questions you can get for Karen. There's other people that want to talk here.
Well, let's, let's...
You can talk to her.
Yeah.
Down in the park. Give him a couple more minutes.
And we can certainly finish this, but...
I think that maybe the best solution is if you have additional questions or concerns about what is happening in that space, if you can come see me in my office, then I can get with Karen, and we can review any of those questions or concerns, and we can get you answers.
Okay.
Okay?
My one last question, should be a cut and dry answer, completion date estimated?
Well, they just started digging, I guess the end of May is where...
The installation of the equipment is to start May 8th, depending on weather and any unforeseen circumstances, that will set the designated set date, but the finish date, but you're looking at a start date of installation of May 8th.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And, thank you, I appreciate you coming, I understand that you're representing people in that area, and I'd be more than happy to talk to you, you know, in addition to that.
All right, cool, thank you. Thank you guys for your patience, too.
And thank you for also bringing up the idea of advanced notice. I think that's something that we should look at any time we are doing any kind of construction through the borough. I know with the zoning, they have to send notices out ahead of time if there's a zoning hearing, so in the future, I hope we'll be able to be more responsive, right, proactive, right, we'll be more proactive with sending out notice to the immediate residents.
Any more public comment?
Yeah, so I'd like to, if the Sergeant of the Police Department could come up here, please, I'd like to donate a check for the Police Department. I saw, utilized a matter of bracelets to support the Police Department. I gave one check deployment, and, because my mom lived there till she passed, and I'd like to offer one to Concha Hockin. It's not much, it's $100, but I'd like to have, you know, for you guys to have that to help you with your fund for your new uniforms, vests, and whatever else you need.
Thank you, David, appreciate it.
And, yeah, not a problem, and I will be selling more, and anything else I sell, I will, you know, give you more money, okay?
That's very kind of you. Thank you.
They deserve it, they work hard, and they deserve it.
I do have a question.
Good idea.
Hi, my name is Teresa Farris, I'm at 125 East 3rd Avenue. About the banking system, I'm not sure if I missed it at the time, but before you chose that one particular bank, did you have a bid out for banks, for your banking services?
So, we, what we're doing now is taking the, the existing note that we borrowed when we started the construction of this building, where there was a full competitive RFP, where we went out and priced different banks, one of those lenders is offering to reduce the rate if we switch over our services. So, it's, you don't normally go out to bid for who does your actual day-to-day banking, and this enabled them to save some money by just transferring from one bank to the other, so...
So none of the banks in Concha Hockin were able to match those prices?
It's not necessarily the prices, the...
The services that they're...
The services, I think, are the same.
It's the cash management.
Right.
So the current cash management at our bank now, based off of just relative fees, and Fulton having our existing general obligation note, it's a combined service that we're getting.
Oh, okay, I just curious about that. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Chris?
I have one suggestion for you in your resolution supporting the continuation of Community Development Block Grant Funds. The Trump budget is also eliminating funds under the Home Assistance Partnership Act, which is home, the borough has benefited greatly from that, we've probably gotten at least a million dollars in the last 20 years from that program, and that is also scheduled to be defunded completely, so if your resolution could include both home and CBDDG, that might be very helpful.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't know that there was a combination for that. I know this is, this resolution that I've received is strictly for the CBDDG.
I was asked to prepare a memo on that, and included the home in that, I don't, the home program in that, I don't know if you received any, if you received that, however, these two programs have done an immense amount of good for a large number of communities, and I don't know if there is any reason why you can't combine them. You can't say that you're supporting the continuation of the Community Development Block Grant Fund and the home program.
Okay, let me, I'll check into that.
Point.
Okay.
Hi, everyone, my name is Rita Montemayor, and I'm at 112 East 7th Avenue, across the street from Jasper's backyard. On Monday at the zoning board hearing, it has been approved for three blind pigs and Mr. Sloan to build an outside full-service bar and play music. I think we can all agree that a community is more than just its residents, it's its residents, it's its businesses, it's, it's a, it's a balance, it's about compromise. Two years ago, when Mr. Sloan came before you to build this bar, residents came and pleaded with you to come to a compromise, and a compromise was made. We said we didn't want an outside bar, and we didn't want music outside. It is a residential area, I'm raising my kids here. You've gone back against it, I wish that you would held them to the compromise you came to two years ago. I'm not sure what or why it has changed, but this is what was approved on Monday. I would also like to ask for an increased police presence in that area. There's been some occasions of public urination and sexual relations in vehicles in our neighborhood, none of them have been reported. I don't want to be the person who has to make those phone calls. I'd rather yell out the door, hey, put that away, or knock on the window. I like to deal with people face to face, but maybe if there was more of a presence that would decrease these sort of activities from occurring. And I have an announcement that maybe More Than the Curve doesn't have for you. Concha Hockin Elementary is doing a fundraiser tomorrow, 3:30 to 8:00, at Scoops, so please come out for ice cream and support our PTO. Thank you for your time.
Any more public comment? Councilor, anything else? If that, meaning that you're...